Hi, colleagues. Hopefully, all of you filled up on something sweet. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started tonight with our meeting, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. As we begin our meeting, I'm gonna ask you to join me for a moment of silence before we move to a pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll do roll call.
Commissioner Repart?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Present.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. All right, so next, if you're new to our city commission meetings, let me walk you through our agenda. So, we have three opportunities for public comment. The very first one is public comment on anything that we're actually voting on today. So, earlier today, we had a number of meetings that we held earlier, and during those meetings, we discussed issues and we voted on issues, and those are what you see on the agenda tonight. So, the first opportunity for public comment is if you're speaking on one of those items, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in. We'll give you up to three minutes to speak, and then we ask you to say what item that you're speaking on. We ask speakers to come up to this podium right here to speak into the microphone, and then also, there's a clipboard on the table. We ask that you write your name, so that our city clerk here makes sure that it's accurate in the minutes. We do have one scheduled public hearing tonight, so if you're here tonight to speak on a public hearing for MDOT, for the reconstruction of Fuller, that public hearing is a little bit later on, so I will open that up in a little bit when we get to that. And then, if you're here to speak about anything else, that opportunity for public comment is at the end of the meeting. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and get started with our first opportunity for public comment, and again, this is if you want to speak about something that we're voting on tonight, and you are welcome to come up. Is that a prop?
That's a prop.
Okay.
It's not a weapon.
Just checking.
Not a weapon. My name is Scott Atchison. I live in Grand Rapids in Ward 3. I grew up in Ward 2, and I work in Ward 1. I'm here to speak about fiscal committee number 4, that you guys are giving $150,000 to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, otherwise known as Experience Grand Rapids. Why does Experience Grand Rapids run an information desk at the airport but not downtown? That is what's making me very... You know, when you guys reviewed the Downtown Development Authority budget, you said it's like time for them to get involved of an information center. And I'm saying, you guys need to take this $150,000 and start building it now. You should not give the Convention and Visitor Bureau another $150,000. You should put that money in an escrow account to be used for an information center. I got little handouts here. Right here.
Right.
You know, this is what the information center should be built at Rosa Parks Circle, right at Pearl and Monroe, right on the corner. You ask any police officer, that is the most pedestrian-crossed intersection in Grand Rapids. During our prize, you have county deputies and Grand Rapids police right there, directing traffic all day long. It needs to go there, a standalone structure. But, and the Convention and Visitor Bureau needs to run it. They run it at the airport, but they have nothing downtown, and this town is booming. In your next information packet, I went around and took pictures of all the construction cranes around downtown. I'm gonna put them in your agenda package, then I'm gonna have like a little slideshow when I'm talking to you about the economic development downtown. The Downtown Development Authority is not on board on this. They're letting you down. I'm telling you why the DDA is letting you down. They want to spend $300,000 on wandering ambassadors. That is silly. Wandering ambassadors are secondary to an information center in every other city except here. You know, and I can't wait till the new city manager comes in, and he's gonna tell you what great information center people they have in Austin with staff members. Now, the DDA sent me an email, they're gonna have another study committee, another committee, hire another consultant. Why is, why don't you just build it? Okay, and if I hear from any other city staff member, elected or appointed official, the city of Grand Rapids cannot build it at Rosa Parks Circle. I'm gonna say, you need to go, you need to be dismissed. Why wouldn't you want to build it at Rosa Parks Circle? That's the most pedestrian-friendly place. All your parades pass there. That's where the fireworks go on. You know, that's where it needs to be. You know, but you should put this $150,000, you shouldn't give it to the Convention and Visitor Bureau. You should put it in an escrow account to build it. Remember, I said we have wandering ambassadors? We have dozens of wandering ambassadors without an embassy. And this information center at Pearl and Monroe will be their embassy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on items we're voting on tonight? Are you coming up, Mr. Miller? Is that a storm coming in? All right, hopefully you brought your umbrellas.
Good evening, fellow citizens. This is the House of the People. Watch Doug Miller, reporting. Welcome to Simon Legria Square, where Third Ward bus routes, 1, 2, 3, and 4, the 5 wealthy, as you know, covers two wards. Do we count the 5? Anyway, they are banned from this place. We're not able to see the installation of head of the Black Ministers Association, as Third Ward commissioners. I support the last speaker, and I think $150,000. Why are you giving, why are you giving, I'm sure it's the right figure, $150,000 to convention? They're out-of-towners, okay? He despise us, Third Ward, Second Ward, we don't get in. And also, $300,000. I talked to some of those kids who were doing the wandering, but mostly Grand Valley kids, suitable blond, you know, more say ship Dutch move. But, why do they get all those bucks? And our buses are banned way down below those wealthy viaducts. Pastor. And, okay, let's go on to the agenda. 9A2, Adesola Eddie, does she support the desegregation of downtown Grand Rapids? And will she get her bus routes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, down here, marching north and south of Monroe, like all the Grand Valley kids, wandering ambassadors? And next, Jesse James, to, no, excuse me, Angelica Valaquet, Division Grand Vote, will she get her bus route 1, 8, 10, 16, largely Catholic, back downtown? Will she fight to desegregate Grand Rapids? Which has been, transit desegregation has been so long now going back, you're trying to revoke the last, capital of the last century. 9B3, Interlocal, I'm suspicious of something called Interlocal with Grand Valley State University, and I know details. What is that all about? It should have been in the agenda. Contract with Experience Grand Rapids, no dollar figures on 9. P4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 7, 8, and 9 items look like low-ball babies. Going down to D, first one, D1, authorizing certain special events, subject to Chapter 53. But which events? You know, the agenda is fascist, there are no details where there should be details, dollar figures. The public's business is none of the public's business. Thank you very much, and so I basically support Scott on his last effort. You know, the money shouldn't be going to Convention Bureau when our buses don't have, have no access to those jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on items that we're voting on tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close that opportunity for public comment, and that'll take us to our next item, which is approval of our minutes. And these are our minutes from our last meeting, which was on August 14th. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
All right, commissioners, any questions, comments, additions, edits? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next up will take us to petitions and communications.
Sure, the first one is a communication from Bianca Messified regarding their resignation from the Community Relations Commission.
That is received and filed.
A communication received from Don Lee, Executive Director of East Town Community Association, expressing opposition to housing now recommendation number 3, number 6, number 8, and number 9.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Taylor Musel, organizer at Parents for Healthy Homes, expressing support for the Human Rights Ordinance.
That is received and filed.
And then, a communication received from Kathy Wegers, expressing concern regarding the zoning presentation by Wemcat.
That is also received and filed.
Communications, two of them, received, expressing opposition for housing now recommendations number 3, 6, 8, and 9.
That is received and filed.
And communication received from Scott Atchison in regards to a proposed information center.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next up will take us to reports of city officers, and we have two items before us tonight.
Number 1, Comptroller's Report for the period of August 8, 2018, through August 21, 2018, in the amount of $105,203,238.06.
That is received and filed.
And Treasurer's Report for the period of August 4, 2018, through August 17, 2018.
And that is also received and filed. All right, so next up will take us to our consent agenda. So, our consent agenda, our items that we voted on this morning in one of our standing committee meetings, where the vote was unanimous. So, tonight, with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. So, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Support.
All right, commissioners, any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, we have one item that is off consent tonight, and that is because one of our colleagues abstained. So, can I... I'll go ahead and read it. Our item off consent is a resolution approving the request from Golden Age Brewing LLC for a new small distiller license to be located at 1504 Plainfield.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Repart, you want to tell us about this?
Yeah, this is just very simple. Creston Brewing Company wants to add the ability to distill on-site, and are requesting that permission.
All right, so, any questions, comments? Commissioner?
Yeah, I will be abstaining, because my kids are part owners in that company.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And abstentions?
Abstention.
Thank you, it carries. All right, next up will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have one ordinance before us tonight.
The ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2018-35 for fiscal year 2019, Amendment Number 3.
Can I get a motion?
Still moved. Support.
All right, Commissioner Jones, from our fiscal committee, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Mayor, on this morning, we had three items for Budget Ordinance. And in the Budget Ordinance, one was a budget reappropriation from fiscal year 2018 to 2019. Second one was additional, allocation of additional state funding for Vital Streets. And the third was a developer deposit for bricks at Midtown Project. And there was no change in the contingent balance.
All right, great. Commissioners, any questions? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Still moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, we do not have any commission resolutions tonight, so that will take us to our scheduled public hearing. So, we have one public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing considering noise variance requested by the Michigan Department of Transportation, and this is in connection with work that's gonna be done at the I-196 reconstruction from Fuller to I-96. So, to start this public hearing, this public hearing has been noticed pursuant to state law. And so, to start the public hearing tonight, I'm gonna ask our friends from MDOT to come on up, share with us some information about the project. I'll see if any of my colleagues have questions. And then, if you're here to speak about this request, I'll open up the floor for comment. So, welcome.
All right, thank you, Mayor. My name is Nate Van Drunen, and I work at MDOT in the Grand Rapids Transportation Service Center office. And we have our project, I-196, from Fuller to I-96, including the interchange. And we'll be reconstructing that section of road and realigning a portion of it, including some, two bridges at Plymouth, and a bridge, two bridges on the interchange as well. We're gonna be adding a third lane on westbound, I-196. We're gonna get a new bridge and a new movement from eastbound 96 over the freeway to the east belt line. And then, of course, the primary purpose of the project is to reconstruct the freeway and bridges, which are old and crumbling. We don't know if the project is gonna be concrete pavement or asphalt pavement yet. We have in approximately $40 million, and a two-year project, so 2019 and 2020. What we're asking for is a variance in noise ordinance in both years, 2019, 75 nights, and 2020, 60 nights. We're not gonna be, you know, it's important to note that we're not gonna be allowing the very loud-type operations, like bridge demolition or pile driving. And there's a variety of things that, to get that project completed in a, you know, expedited fashion, that we'll have to do at night. So, we're in the process of having some public meetings. We just had one a couple of weeks ago, and then we'll be having more as we go through the winter and into spring next year, kicking off this project. We also, we, another kind of a side note, and this is not involving our request, but we do have a project starting on the interchange this week. And that's a separate project, it's not included here, but they are gonna work hand-in-hand and be coordinated with those two projects. So, that's about all I have, unless there's other questions?
All right, I'll see if we have questions. I think all of us have probably heard from folks about the detours and the complaints about, why are so many streets closed down? I always remind people, short-term pain for long-term gain. It'll be better in the end, to bear with us during these short construction cycles. So, I'm sure you have heard those complaints as well. So, thank you for your work. Commissioners, I'll open it up for questions. Commissioners in the Second Ward, you're probably closest to this. So, you have any questions? All right, okay. Well, I'll let you take a seat, and I'll open it up for public comment.
All right, thank you.
So, thank you. So, if you are here tonight to be heard on this request, you are welcome to come forward. And again, this is a noise variance by MDOT. Coming up, Mr. Miller? Coming up, talk about noise? Yes, 13-1.
So, I received no notice?
Following you, Mr. Miller. Sorry, I didn't know what you meant by 13-1, but yes, it's 13-1.
Yeah. Well, 13-1, you should have been hearing first in the neighborhood. This is a fascist secretive process. Who needs all that noise? Our bus routes there don't even get downtown, I can aim for you. The 14, the 14 connection with the new 19 has been disrupted. Fuller, we would talk on Fuller, we're further north. The 19 was pulled off North Fuller. And, is that off the subject? Anyway, noise, noise is a terrible problem downtown. We need a downtown neighborhood association. I respected the Downtown Alliance. It was around, it was a bottom-up organization, people with credibility. There's no reason for any of this noise, and I received no notice. I've saw no notice, any bus stop out there? One of my bus stops is right below that freeway, and do I have standing? Well, I know the fellow that the freeway's named after. And then, one other thing is professional courtesy. Would anybody object? My closest bus stop now is on Oak Industrial. I'd like to permission to, along with it, you can make all this noise, could they connect to, could they cut to wire barriers on both sides of the freeway? So, we can get over the closest bus stop, the 14 now, on Oak Industrial. And once again, we were excluded. Oak Industrial, over the decades, has supported very little bus ridership, and your biggest stop is the Cambridge stop, sometimes half the ridership. Your last bus out from downtown, sometimes 80% of the ridership. So, formally requesting that we can cut through the barriers on both sides. You know, I owe it to Rand, but neighborhood activist named, let's see, what was her first name? Krista, Chairman Hope promised her that she would have a bus stop. She says, only one bus stop, 890 Perkins, okay? And that is within hearing zone of this noisy project. We don't need the noise, and the maps went up after I came in. So, it's a vicious fascist maneuver to, and also elder abusive, to exclude people from any hearing. So, please bring a hearing into that neighborhood first. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is for this construction season, you've had plenty of time to do it, not late August, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, would anyone else like to be heard on the noise variance request? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close that public hearing, and that will be referred to our Community Development Committee. You sign your name on the clipboard. So, this opportunity for public comment is open. Is anyone here to speak? All right, if I don't see anyone, I'm gonna close this. Are you, are you here to speak? Oh, yeah, yeah. Come on up.
What's the town, the town and now, conversation about now?
So, this is, yeah, this is a public comment period for anything. So, it can be on any tab, the city that you live in, and sign the clipboard. And you are welcome to speak for up to three minutes.
My name is Dino Newville. I run a youth ministry on 44th Street in Kalamazoo in Grand Rapids. We have 380 to 400 kids a week at our gym. They're out the street, they're not in jail, they're not doing drugs. We have a school program, we have a ministry, we have everything going in the right direction. The activity that goes on across the street and within the block of our area, our guns, drugs, violence, it's horrible. A little more than a year ago, we had plenty of police presence. Police that were out there on regular patrols. We don't even see them no more, and we really would appreciate more police out there. I mean, they used to stop in to our program and say hi to the kids. I mean, it's very far and in-between now. I understand there's a lot of activity going on in the city that is not good, and their presence is needed elsewhere. But, you know, the kids, if we lose, if our program, a lot of the parents want the kids to come out there because of what's going on in the area. And I assure the parents that the police come out here, we're okay. And also, we had a visit of the mayor, from the mayor and the chief of police, which we're really appreciative, really made every day. But, I would like to see more presence of police, not only in the patrol of the area. My wife is totally afraid to even go across the street to the store. The activity's bad. Daytime, evening time, it's worse, there's drugs, and the robberies and things going on around here. A block away, the bank has been robbed three times in the last few months. Not good. I mean, I know when you see a police car, most people are doing bad, don't want to see the car. Most people are doing good, or they're blessed. I mean, it's a blessing to see them. And it is for me, for my kids, for everybody. I think the chief is doing an awesome job. I know we're short-staffed, or you guys are, the city is. And, you know, we support that. And Mayor, I think you're doing an awesome job. We love you guys also. I mean, anything, anything that will help us with that area. I mean, between 36th Street and Kalamazoo, it's horrible. 32nd Street, Kalamazoo, it's all Grand Rapids, it's within a couple blocks from us. I have a home over on Kendall and Waymouth, and the area's bad. I mean, it's all Grand Rapids. We'd like more support up there, if we can get it, or whatever we have to do. And I was told this is what I should do, is come here. I'm not a speaker, but I'm doing the best I can. I wish we get more support out there. Thank you, everybody, God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dino. Dino, we appreciate you and all that you do for kids in this community. So, thanks for coming down. Appreciate that. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Earlier talk, excuse me, Commissioner Joe, about what I was gonna say, but I'm gonna make it brief. He gave me a suggestion, but my concern is the judicial system, okay? What I would like to just find out is, if we were to bring our case in pro se, proper, unrepresented. I had a situation in 2016 where a judge chastised me. I'm very capable about representing, writing my legal representation. However, I'm not gonna name the name of the judge, but the judge said, "I am not Judge Judy." That is very disrespectful. Now, and then, the judge also said, "If you bring a frivolous lawsuit in here, you're gonna be sanctioned." But the judge didn't even read the complaint. He just looked at me, a foreigner with an accent, and he said, "I could, you could be in big trouble," or something of that nature. Now, what protection do we have as minorities? So that we can present our case? What can the City Commission, the mayor, do in those types of situations? That is just my question, and I would like some sort of response. It's not, I'm not trying to make any type of, I'm not being a prophet for anybody. I just want to be heard. I pay taxes when I work, even when I didn't. But, I have got to be heard, I have got to be, I don't want to be afraid of the system in order to just go ahead and represent me the best I can. So, this is just my comment and my question to the commissioners and to your honor.
Yeah, thank you. And sir, can you remind us of your name?
My name is Sam Turf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, is appointed to the gentleman state bridge court system of the state.
Yeah, you know what?
This is Circuit Court.
Yeah, and we'll... We'll follow up. Thank you, Mr. Miller, though, that was a, that's a good distinction. So, thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hello, I'm Martha Cooper, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Came with a couple of concerns tonight, as I usually do with, about housing. I wanted to comment on some of the things that went on with the Wemcat. They did a very good job of trying to, I was very impressed with the organization. Although, from the discussion we were having, it sort of became clear that some of us who have been following this issue were quite more aware of some of the things that, but then, more than they were. So, I also wanted to say that there were things that, you know, I commented on, but I'm gonna specifically mention the "by right." I was quite offended, because I believe that that was tabled due to the 500, for, due to many things. We had a lot of community pushback on that one. It was basically gonna mean that trunk lines like Kalamazoo and inner-city trunk lines were going to not have public input, which was our main thing, you know, our rights and not "by right." So, I was really upset to hear it's going to still be there, but we're gonna call it now instead of "by right," and administrative approval, which doesn't take into community input. The pushback was about community input, and that all communities have a right to the city, and for their representatives to listen to them, consider their needs. The buffer zones were still 500 feet. I stood and pointed out that if you really think about it, that's a nice way of saying 500 in one direction, 500 in another, and that's 1,000. Starts looking like a pretty good chunk of neighborhood. I was thinking about the Amplify situation, and how they now own that property, and they can put anything they want without community input. They were sort of resisted too, because the community doesn't really trust what's going on. And I think one of the questions that I wanted to say, and I kept thinking in my mind, is, how much does the community trust the city? Because when I was in one of them on the west side, it was a hot, muggy building, and everybody was like, "Affordable for whom?" You know, I'm not gonna be ashamed anymore, and I'm gonna tell you that what you're calling affordable is three times my damn income. I'm a real person. I've lived in this city and contributed to this city, and not just coming here and pestering you about housing. I have a lot to offer this city. There's a community center coming in on the northeast side. These people are powerful and have something to add. The other thing, since I'm really out of time, is my concern regarding what happened with the one-and-a-half-minute video, that was unacceptable. I think hopefully people will learn. And, you know, if the bars, if it's gonna be breweries... And, you know, if the bars, if it's going to be Brewery City, and we're always doing things for the bars and the bar owners, then maybe the bar owners could pitch in a little more for just a cop to run around on bar nights.
Thank you.
And, and worry about four cops on a foot instead of ten blows, and you don't know what part of the body it went on.
Time's up, thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Yes, my name is Scott Atchison. I want to just clarify something. What I did hear between this public hearing and Mayor Bliss stated about the detours and everything. You know, this, what do I want to say? This information...
Hold on a minute, Scott, you're...
I just want to bring up my, my email thing again.
We already, we already closed that down, so...
I just want to show you a couple, because I, okay, I don't need them. But I'm saying, these people in this information center will not give people bad directions. They will know where all the detours are daily, especially if a water main breaks. You know, right now, these wandering ambassadors have no information. I mean, they, you ask them about restaurants and bars, they got to pull out a device, wait for it to come up, and it's like humiliating. It's, it's like almost Flintstone to me. I mean, but the people in this booth will give the best directions and information. You know, if somebody's like going to Woodland Mall, and there's a detour on ninety-six to the Belt Line and head south because of their project, they would know that. That's what I'm saying. Not only would these people in this booth have the best directions and information, they would let you know what every bar and restaurant is open every day, open to close, and every day that list would change. You know, I'm telling you, not only, I want to call it a Directions and information booth, because half of all information is directions. You know, because these people spent, you know, three days before they come here for their four-day conference knowing, "I want to go to Founders, I want to go to here," but where is it? Something you got to drive, but I'm saying, the people in the booths, well, I, these wandering ambassadors just make me want to laugh. They, they don't even know the city. You know, but for directions and information, these people would be able to guide people around the detours, and there are so many of them right now. I mean, not, that's not a bad thing. I do believe there will be gain. But just remember, this next agenda packet, you're going to have a bunch of pictures of all the cranes around downtown that's going to show you why we need an information center year-round at Pearl Monroe.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard tonight? All right. All right. Last public comment, Mr. Miller. I'm going to let you have it. It's, it is a great country. It really is.
Well, not the, well, it's not Miller back. Not the Grand Rapids I signed up for, but where should we go first on this? Interlocal, nine B three, I'm suspicious of something called interlocal. It's an out-of-town word. This should definitely be, be hearing, okay? What's that all about? This month marks, oh, your official document is cut off the right, but ran in the opinion section last week or so. It's either Friday or Sunday. It's cut off a little right, on the right. The name of it is pandering to pothead profiteers, not out-of-town pothead profiteers. You're not even taking care of our veterans up there. They're going to knock down several buildings up there. But, but certainly your priorities was to ingratiate yourself to all these out-of-town pothead profiteers. This month marks the sixtieth anniversary of Jerry Turner's shocking materialization on Congressman Ford's family, who, only two years later, he was up, less than two years, about twenty-three months, in the New Orleans Convention, he almost made it as Vice President Nixon's vice presidential nominee. He lost at the last moment to Senator Henry Cavett Lodge of Massachusetts. Interesting story, but I've no time to get into it. However, as of current event, I'm demanding a replay, repeal, replay rights on that statue. It needs a facelift, subita, as they say in Rome. Betty was the local babe who attracted the congressman and U M Hero, won a national championship. Jerry Ford, her sister's, her statue's going to be out there from hundreds of years, so the statue should have a facelift on it. And as nice as our astronaut, new astronaut statue next to children's museums. Can't live with your gated nineteen, no nickname for it. The pastor, the once noble nineteen, Grace, I fought for that. It graced Madison Square, Oftale Hall, it was stolen in broad daylight from Madison Square. Interesting story. Hope we get to do it. Speaking of which, Link appears to have gotten a kickback of almost thirty acres of one property alone for keeping quiet about the nineteen being stolen. Look at all the publicity we're getting on the nineteen. I pressured Varga a couple of years ago, and first put it in, it's basically at Thirteenth South, to run it south of wealthy. I saw a two and a half mile gap. He went into it, but he never did any publicity on it whatsoever when the nineteen was pushed south. He stole it. The next year, ridership was down seventy percent, month after month, when the nineteen was on Michigan. Next month, down sixty percent.
Thanks, Mr. Miller. Appreciate it.
Okay, well, I...
All right, all right, I'm going to close that public hearing then, and that will take me to our colleagues, and I think I'll start down here with Commissioner Arpart tonight.
Not much to say tonight. Thanks for coming out. I hope you brought your umbrellas with you. Sounds a little vicious out there.
It does, it does.
But I'm excited for Pastor Moody to join us. I love the fact that you sat with people in the high points of their life and the low points of their life, and that experience is going to be huge around this table.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
I just want to say thank you for allowing me this opportunity to be with all of you, and I hope I fulfill my responsibility to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, welcome, Commissioner Moody, and everybody, you can take a ride on Bus nineteen now up and down Michigan Street for free.
Thank you. Commissioner Lanier?
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone who've come out tonight and for their comments, and welcome again Pastor Commissioner Moody.
Commissioner O'Connor, you want to talk about Bridge Street? Bridge Street Market?
Yeah, man.
Yes, we all just, almost just got back from the initial reception for Bridge Street Market, which kicks off tomorrow morning. It opens at eight AM. So for a long time, we heard from the world that we wanted a grocery store in, in Grand Rapids, and so we're super excited for one to open on beautiful Bridge Street, very near downtown, so I think it's going to be real accessible for people. It's, it's an amazing space. It's beautiful. The folks at Rockford Construction did a great job building it out, and our friends from Meyer with a pretty amazing concept to bring fresh food to our neighborhoods for all to enjoy. So I encourage everyone to get down there and check it out and take the opportunity to, to support it. We asked for it, so I think it's important that we, you know, we support it too.
Yeah, great. Commissioner?
Yep, just thanks to all who came out on this evening, and again, congratulations to Pastor Moody for joining us here on the commission.
And before turning to our appointed officials, I'll just do a couple of reminders, colleagues. If you feel like walking five miles on Monday morning, you're welcome to come out for the Community Bridewalk, ten AM over at Gillette Bridge. Labor Fest is after that. And then the following Saturday, September eighth, I'll be out for the Mayor's River Cleanup. So if you feel like putting on some gloves and some boots and picking up some trash, you are welcome to come join me for that. That's at eight thirty AM on Saturday, the eighth. So you are all welcome to join me for those fun community events. So with that, Mr. Tom Almonte, filling in today, anything to add? All right, city attorney? City clerk? All right, we're adjourned. Have a good night. Please drive safe.
Good job, Mayor.
All right.